I would like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting, that's Thursday, March 4th, 2021. If we can start with roll call, please.
Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Pebsner. Commissioners Dallas.
Here.
Hut.
Here.
And Spears.
Present.
Great. Next up is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Also move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Next up will be the approval of minutes. Are there any additions, edits, changes, removals that people would like with the minutes from February 18th? Planning Commission meeting. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Next up is the Council Liaison Report.
Good evening, everyone. So I have four things for you. The first thing is that on March 2nd, we are hoping to have an outdoor meeting in the, in the park. We have a 40% chance of rain in the afternoon. So we're still a little bit touch and go on that, but the intent and the hope is to have that there. At the meeting, there are two things from the Planning Commission that will be on the agenda, as you may be aware of. The unreinforced masonry and the ordinance on affordable housing. The, I can't remember if it was AB or SB 2345. Will be, the updates to the ordinance will be on the agenda. And then, then the final thing. In, and city attorney, correct me if this is improper, you know, I would love to have a discussion with the commission at some point on electric codes for, for the city. And so if at some point that's an appropriate thing, I'd like to see if we can have that conversation.
As, as a discussion item, that's, that's totally fine, Councilor Parkhurst, but if we were going to adopt an ordinance, that direction will need to come from the council, so we'd have
Correct. It would, it is only intended as a discussion item.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Parkhurst, just to confirm that date is March 9th, the meeting?
That's correct. This Tuesday, March 9th, 4:00 PM. Pray for good weather. As much as we need the rain, it would be nice to be outside and be a person for a city council meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have community input. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. An item that is not on the agenda. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than five minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Copies of the agenda are available for your convenience online. State legislation, Government Code Section 54954.2 limits the commission's ability to take action on specific requests. Government Code Section 54954.2 limits the placement of items on the agenda for action 72 hours prior to meetings, except for specific findings. No action or discussion may be undertaken by the Planning Commission on any item if not posted on the agenda, except that commissioners or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by the public, or a commissioner or staff liaison may ask a question for clarification, or make a brief report on his or her own activities. A commissioner or the commission itself may provide a reference to staff to report back to the commission at a subsequent meeting concerning any matter, or may direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Do we have any callers waiting?
Chair Dennison, at this time, we don't appear to have anybody wishing to make public comment.
Thank you. We will move on to the next agenda item. But before that, I believe that City Attorney would like to offer some clarification or guidance on disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
Yes, thank you, Chair Dennison. One, one thing we should be aware of is that for the disclosure of site visits, it's not simply to really yet get what we want out of it. It's not simply just a disclosure. We're trying to also include in the record what we learned that's already in the agenda report. It's not included in the resolution. That's not included in any other, other report that's part of the agenda packet. So if, if you learn something in either visually, in your visual inspection of a property, or if you learn something through your conversation with the applicant or the owner of the property, that's not reflected in the agenda, in the agenda report, in the agenda packet. That's the type of stuff that we, it's best to disclose at this time in order to make sure it's part of the record. So if it ever comes up on appeal, we can address it. Thank you.
Great. At this time, are there anybody who would like to disclose site visits?
I visited both sites and I met with the homeowner on Oak Crest.
I visited both sites and I met with Josh Gable, the homeowner on Oak Crest, and he gave me a tour of the property. And we discussed lots of things. Don't know if I learned anything that wasn't already there. And I also visited the property on Orange Grove.
Commissioner Hut.
Um, I, I drove by the property on Orange Grove. The Oak Crest one is within 500 feet of my house, so I'll recuse on that one.
All right. I was unable to make it to, I drove by the Orange Grove when I did not actually get out and expected, and I did not make it to Oak Crest. So going forward, I know that after our next meeting, or after this meeting, for our next meeting, time change will have occurred. So if there are the chances to get, maybe not during the business hours only, all the hours for the last seven or 10 or 12 houses have been probably due to daylight constraints during the day. It would be great to get some alternate hours there a little later. Does staff have a presentation for us about our next agenda item, which is 91 East Orange Grove, tentative parcel map 20-01?
Yes, we do have a staff presentation and PowerPoint presentation, which we will be queuing up right now. And it will be given by Claire Lynn, our associate planner.
Thank you. Before I start, I would like to make a statement that we have received one written public comment, and it has forwarded to all planning commissioners. So this evening, the Planning Commission will be reviewing the application for tentative track, a tentative parcel map for the property located at 91 East Orange Grove Avenue. The property is located at the north side of East Orange Grove between South Baldwin Avenue and Mountain Trail Avenue at the south of the city boundary, abutting city of Arcadia. So the site indicated in red is approximately 0.96 acre lot surrounded by other single-family residence also zone in R1. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the existing 41,600 and a square foot single-family residential property into two equal-sized parcel measuring 20,804 square feet each. Pursuant to our municipal co newly created lots in the R115 zone shall have a width not less than 90 feet and a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. This project qualifies for the minor land division category exemption under C Qua due to that the division of the property is into four or fewer parcel for residential uses. Here's the project summary of the lot. It's zoned R1, one family residential and with the general plan destination of residential low density. The proposed lot is divided into two, but currently there is three structures on the property, including the main residence of 2,640 square feet, a 675 square foot of guest house, and a four-car garage in the rear that was built in 1939. Here's our photographs of the improvement on the lot viewing from Orange Grove Avenue. This is the front gate and the front facade. And there is a oak tree on the side, on, on the side bordering Orange Grove Avenue. The picture at the lower center shows the rear view of the guest house and the four-car garage. The proposed tentative parcel map is prepared by EGL Engineering. The subject property is not proposed to change zone for the new development. It is maintaining the residential use. The proposed request will not altering the exit, the existing access from Orange Grove. The access will be ma- remained for parcel two and parcel one will have a new driveway approach. And you can see the yellow dot, green dot indicated the location of the oak tree. And also there is a fire hydrant on the fronting Orange Grove for parcel two. The parcel is 92 feet and 93 feet wide and approximately 225 feet in depth. So the development review required by the co is to have the preliminary map reviewed by all the directors, public works, utility, and also reviewed by our city engineer, planning director, building official and fire marshal and fire captain. Their comment has been either incorporated into the plan or included in the condition of approval. Applicant also prepared a historic resources evaluation report back in 2017, determined that, that the property built in 1939 is not eligible for any destination as a cultural resource or historic resources. Operator's report were prepared as well to evaluate all 90 trees on the site. Only one coast life oak was identified at Orange Grove Avenue to be protected in place. And currently there is no plan proposed for the improvement, but design review permit and discretionary demolition permit may be filed subsequently after receiving city council's approval and a final parcel map has been accepted. Findings have to be made in order to approve the project. Here's a summary of the tentative parcel map finding that the proposed map and the proposed subdivision is consistent with the general plant destination and is also consistent with the general plan and also the zoning. Any future development on the site would have to be consistent with the R115 zoning requirement and standard. The site is physically suitable for the type of development in the single-family zone lot as the subdivision will result in two residential lot and the lot size will be significantly larger than what is minimum required by the R115 zone. The site is suitable for the density for the development in that the subdivision will remain the same density as one family residential zone and subject to the R1 zone, zoning standard. The design and design of the subdivision and the proposed improvement are not likely to cause environmental damage or cause serious public health problem as the division remains single-family uses. And the improvement will be subject to the municipal co established to protect the public health, safety and welfare. The design of the subdivision will not conflict with any easement. The subjective subdivision will not create the need or conflict with any such easement. So alternative before Planning Commission this evening is to approve the request for tentative parcel map 2001 and recommend approval to the city council based on the exhibits submitted or deny the request by identifying the findings that Planning Commission feels cannot be made and the basis for rejecting those findings or continue the the project and provide directions to the applicant and staff. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission take the following action to approve the tentative parcel map 2001 application and recommend approval to the city council pursuant to the Planning Commission Resolution 2004. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. I see that our engineer is also with us. They can answer any questions that you might have for the applicant.
Great. Does anybody, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to say anything? Not necessary, just an option?
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, hi. Good evening, members of Planning Commission. My name is Sheila Harchanto from EGL Associates, the civil engineer for this project. And we have complied with all applicable CD codes and standards and agreed to the conditions of approval and will be available to answer any question you might have.
Commissioner, are there any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. I think that we should take public comment on this before we bring it back to the commission. So at this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning this particular agenda item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than five minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. We'll give the public some time here to dial it. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning this specific agenda item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than 25 minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Look at just a couple more minutes here. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is, that is specifically this agenda item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than five minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Do we have any callers who have dialed it?
Chair Dennison, we do have somebody wishing to make public comment. I will patch him through now.
Thank you. Caller, you are, you are live. You may proceed.
Yes, Jason Fan, homeowner at 550 West Orange Grove Avenue, Arcadia, direct across the street from subject property at 91 East Orange Grove Avenue. I'd like to make a comment. Does someone hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you. Please proceed.
Yes, I oppose to this subdivision. The reason why is I heard the comment from the planning department about the zoning and so forth, but for the homeowner, I lived here for over five years. I owned the property nearly eight. We have, the reason why we build a house here and live here is because of the big lot. We have 188 front, feet frontage on Orange Grove and grows over an acre, 48,000 square feet. We build one single-family house. At that time, we can asking for subdivision into two. We choose not to because we enjoy the privacy of the street. However, that's not main reason I oppose to the subdivision is because I have to, Orange Grove is a very narrow street and it's straight and there's a lot of traffic. Not at recent time, since before the pandemic, before March of 2020. Every morning I have to take my daughter on weekdays to go to school in Pasadena. The traffic on Baldwin intend to make left turns. There's a stop sign on Baldwin and Orange Grove Avenue. Generally wait is over 10 minutes in some, between 7:30
All right. Thank you. I think that we should take public comment on this before we bring it back to the commission. So at this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning this particular agenda item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than five minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. We'll give the public some time here to dial it. At this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning this specific agenda item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than 25 minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. We'll give just a couple more minutes here at this time. Any person may address the planning commission concerning an item that is that is specifically this agenda item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than five minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Do we have any callers who have dialed it?
Chair Dennison, we do have somebody wishing to make public comment. I will patch him through now.
Thank you.
Caller, you are live. You may proceed.
Yes, Jason Fan, homeowner at 550 West Orange Grove Avenue, Arcadia. Direct across the street from subject property at 91 East Orange Grove Avenue. I'd like to make a comment. Does someone hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you. Please proceed.
Yes, I oppose to this subdivision. The reason why is I heard the comment from the planning department about the zoning and so forth, but for the homeowner, I lived here for over five years. I own the property nearly eight. We have a, the reason why we build a house here and live here is because of the big lot. We have 188 feet frontage on Orange Grove and grows over an acre, 48,000 square feet. We built one single family house. At that time, we can asking for subdivision into two. We choose not to because we enjoy the privacy of the street. However, that's not main reason I oppose to the subdivision is because I have to Orange Grove is a very narrow street and it's straight. And there's a lot of traffic, not at recent time since before the pandemic, before March of 2020. Every morning I have to take my daughter on weekdays to go to school in Pasadena. The traffic on Baldwin intend to make left turns, there's a stop sign on Baldwin and Orange Grove Avenue. Generally wait is over 10 minutes in some, between 7:30 until the between five and 10 minutes, I wouldn't want to accelerate. And for me, most of the time I make a right turn instead of make a left turn to circle back from San Carlos back to Foothill, then make a right turn to entering to get on the 210 freeway. That's how it is. And in the days, if people have parties or visitors, if there is parking on one side of the street, make it very narrow. If you make it parking, if people park cars on both sides of the street, make it dangerous. Especially recently, they posted a sign, I don't know, on the, on the Arcadia, on the south side for bike lanes. That there's a lot of bikers. And with the increasing density, that will be having a problem of slowing down the traffic in the morning time. And also, if it be increasing of cars parked on the street will be causing the traffic congestion. So that's the main reason why. I like the way it is. I like to have, I like the tree. I like the it is not, it's a very good looking structure as of is right now. However, I've never been inside, but the yard was never maintained. I have to say that. I feel they abuse the community since the current owner who owns it before then was a real estate agent who uses the renters, the rental property. So there's a lot of traffic. That's how they, how it goes. The, they should put in a construction fence when they keep the place vacant instead, they use the existing fence and tied up poorly done some plastic shield over the fence. It blown away by a, by strong wind in matter of like two weeks. It's been damaged since then. And I feel the subdivision going to causing more trouble. And the person, the applicant, whoever is doing this is not care about the community versus I don't not know their experience. Apparently they are not a qualified developer. It's, I don't know what the future will be, but so I pray for the commissioner to deny the applicants for the tentative parcel map. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments waiting?
Your dentist and give me one second. Oh, no. We had one person raise her hand and it looks like they are no longer in the queue. Maybe it was done by mistake, but we don't have anybody wishing to make public comment at this time.
All right. At this time, I will bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Who do you want to go first? Commissioner Spears, I saw you blink.
Okay. First of all, I want to say that the report from McKenna is excellent. And I, it was very, very helpful and created a really excellent history of the site. And I, I very much enjoyed it. So the more of those that I see, happier it'll be and it makes it, it makes decisions easier. This, this is a piece of property that has kind of languished for a long time. It has not received a lot of love. You know, it's, it's hasn't kept up. There's not a lot in it to salvage. So I see no reason why it, we know, we can't move ahead with this. So I'm comfortable with making the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Dallas. When you unmute yourself, we'll be thrilled to hear you.
It all looks pretty straightforward and by the book, and I have no problems making the findings.
If you, Commissioner Hut.
Yeah, I concur with the other commissioners. I think this is fine lots, but the resulting lots are bigger than, far bigger than the minimum already. I understand the commenters concerns about the traffic on Orange Grove. I hope we could do something about that, but I don't think one lot split is going to make a big difference. I think really we need maybe some traffic coming issues there. Also, I think the reports were well done. One thing that I did notice by driving by is that the Aleppo pine in the back, which is mentioned as number 20 and the tree report is really, is really the best tree by far on that property. And I hope when they do the plans for the houses, they can save that. The oak tree in the front is really a little oak. It's not that big of a deal, one way or the other. One other thing that I just want to remind everybody is that our floor area requirements are different for lots that are new or reconfigured after 2016. So when the plans for the houses come forward on these new lots, they'll use the gross floor area requirements under 172125A instead of 172125B. So I just wanted to remind everybody about that and I can certainly make all the findings as well.
Well, you stole my thunder with the code change, but other than that, I will concur with everything that's been said by the other commissioners and I can easily make the findings. So if we can get a motion.
There are drawbacks to being the chair. And with that, I will move that we approve, approve the planning commission resolution recommending approval of the tract map to the city council.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And Commissioner Hut, if you would be so kind as to turn off your camera for this next part.
Okay, I am going to recuse myself as I said, because I live within 500 feet. So I will mute and stop my camera. So you guys can't see any input from me.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is design review permit 20-09, variance 20-01, administrative design review permit 20-07 and minor conditional use permit 20-06 for the residents at 690 Oak Crest Drive. Do we have a presentation from staff?
We have a PowerPoint presentation by Josh Wolf and he will key that up now.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting the applications as mentioned for design review permit 2009, variance 2101, administrative design review permit 2007 and minor condition lease permit 2006. Give me a second to queue up. I'll share my screen here first. And just to save a mouthful, I will refer to those applications as the project from here on out. The location of the project is on Oak Crest Drive above Carter and between the Bailey Canyon debris basin and the Auburn debris basin. The lot is zoned, single family residential R1. It was built in 1980. Lot size is roughly 16,000 square feet and observes a great elevation change of about 40 feet. The existing lot coverage is 3,500 square feet with building square footage is habitable at 3,660 and gross of 5,087. In the neighborhood, we have a mix of zones of single family residential and hillside management residential zones ranging between one and three story structures. Tonight, the applicant is requesting as part of the project to demolish extensions off of the garage totaling 337 square feet. Addition of floor area totaling 337 square feet comprising of the expansion of the master bedroom at the upper floor of the residence. A new stairway, which is an expansion of the southern portion of the residence. Removal of a spiral stairway to the basement resulting in the addition of floor areas to the main level where that removal occurs. And removal of the existing stairway adding floor area to the upper floor where the existing floor area is currently counted as one floor, one area for floor. The enclosure of the upper floors area will be counted towards additional floor area. The second part of their project is to enclose the breezeway that exists on site. This is all covered by second level portions of the structure. And is not affecting the counted floor area as part of the total 5,087 gross square feet of floor area. Lastly, as part of this application, they will be converting the basement level to a junior accessory dwelling unit. They are closing off that access between the current kitchen of the residence. And that's the spiral staircase leading down into that basement. There is exterior access into this junior accessory dwelling unit from the gray level at the level below the deck at the rear. So here are existing photographs on the left. You can see the residence as viewed from the street entering and onto the property. The first thing is the garage with livable area above. Behind that, you can see areas of the extensions that are proposed to be demolished. Can everyone see my mouse or do I need to get the mouse pointer or the laser pointer here? The digital laser pointer.
We can see it.
Okay. So this part that I'm circling is the area that they're going to be demolishing. This is storage and a gym. And in the middle here is the area, the entrance to the breezeway of which they will be enclosing. On the right hand side, you can see the rear of the residence. To the left on this picture is areas under the existing deck or under the existing upper balcony off of a, off of one of the bedrooms. Areas below this is areas that they plan to enclose. This is continuation of the breezeway that was entered in from the front. Additionally, they will also be proposing to enclose the upper balcony here off the rear above this enclosed portion of the structure. I have two more additional photos just for clarification. You can see another view of the rear more focused to the side of the residence. And then one more, which gives a better view of the area that is going to be where the extension is for the stairs, the new stairs. And you also get a great view of their view of what they see. A neighborhood analysis was conducted for this as part of the requirements for noticing the same properties in the 300 foot radius were also analyzed in their floor area. And the floor area taken is all amounts that are coming from the county assessor's office. This only counts habitable floor area. So the red line item you see here is the 5,087 square feet. This is the gross floor area. So you want to consider that in actuality, their proposal is only about 400 square feet less than this discounting the area of the garage. So we're looking at about 46 or 4,500 square feet. It still kind of leaves it there at that line item at that level. But we can see that it is still above the average of the top one third of residences in the immediate area. The top third being the average at 3,524 square feet. And here's a summary of the development standards that need to be met for this project. The lot size at 16,000 square feet is not changing. Lot coverage however, is changing. It is decreasing due to the proposed demolitions of the extensions. The proposed additions do not actually impact the lot coverage as they are being proposed on existing footprint at second levels. And the building height is not changing, but it is, I did not say no change because part of the addition is to continue this existing 42 feet, one inch height. I will explain later that this is being proposed in tandem with the variance. The gross floor area here I'm showing is not changing. Not that it's no change, but that there's no net gain from the area that they are proposing as additions and demolitions. Again, this is not meeting code because the existing code requirement is for 4,110 square feet. I'll explain later how this is being addressed. In terms of their setbacks, the front setback at 26 feet, three meets code does not change for side setbacks. The current is cumulatively 24 feet, six inches is required at 27 feet. Being proposed at 31 feet, three inches in part due to the demolitions of the extensions off the garage. And this will end up meeting code where it currently does not. And that change is really just on the south elevation, changing from 15 feet, six inches to 22 feet, three inches where 18 feet is required. At the rear, there's plenty of space for setback. It definitely meets code requirements. And then for parking, there, there is an existing two car garage. There's no change proposed here. However, there is a required three spaces per dwelling unit over 3,500 square feet. I'll explain later how this is being addressed. So in terms of building height, the applicant, the applicant is requesting a variance to encroach beyond the established building envelope, which is limited by a 25 foot height limit as as noted in Simaradran Municipal Code 17.20.040. A design review permit is requested for additions of floor area that are at the upper level or second level pursuant to Simaradran Municipal Code Section 17.20.027, Paragraph B. And an administrative designer review permit is requested to permit work that reduces the level of nonconformity. This is the nonconformity of the gross floor area. They're reducing nonconformity in setbacks. And then the minor condition lease permit is requested to permit work on a site where parking requirements are not met. So in the site plans here, we can see on the left is the existing footprint. We have here on the left, I'm circling with my mouse is the existing footprint of the garage. And you can see extensions off that to the south where there's a storage and a gym. And to the east of that is where the existing residences. What's not immediately apparent from this footprint is the areas above which are covered by the second levels structures resulting in a breezeway between the front and to the deck. On the proposed plan, you can see where those resulting enclosures by covering, covering from the second story structure is enclosed in that breezeway is an infill development. It maintains the existing footprint aside from the demolition proposed for the extensions off the garage. From the floor plan, we can see basically a lot of this is being demolished for a total remodel. We're looking at a new, a brand new floor plan altogether. I have reoriented this so that north is to the left of the screen. And what's happening here is an infill connecting the garage to the main residence. Adding usable and habitable floor area here. What's being proposed is a hallway, a guest bedroom, a powder room and mechanical closet. Part of removing the existing stairways is to make room for a breakfast nook and addition of the areas occurring within, addition of the new stairs is occurring within this existing nonused space. It is going to add volume to the areas above in order to maintain access to the second level. And here you can see where the spiral staircase is currently located to be removed and added for floor area as part of the new kitchen. And the only, the only changes occurring to the deck is to the removal of the stairway leading down to the grade. To the upper level floor plan, our changes occurring are again, the demolition of the stairs being added floor area for a new office. We have a total remodel of the master bedroom, which is due in part to the proposed addition. They are going to add a new master, not adding a master bedroom, but I'm sorry, master bathroom. They are going to be remodeling the master bathroom and increasing the area of the master bedroom. And other than that, we're only looking at demolitions of areas of extensions off the garage. Here's a floor area analysis of everything that is occurring to the structure at the lowest level, including areas that are being converted to the junior accessory dwelling in it in green. This is at the lowest level. And in the middle here, we have the main level. You can see highlighted. You can see highlighted in orange is all of the existing area that is considered as floor area for the purposes of planning. The highlighted areas in purple or lilac are areas that are being added to the floor area. And areas highlighted in blue are areas to be demolished. And one thing I want to point out here is that these levels all are in alignment with the top right corner here. And I'm circling with my mouse. This corner is in alignment, in vertical alignment with the corner here. And the top right corner here off of the new master bedroom extension. Here I've included a roof plan. We're seeing that to the main residence. There is a shed roof with which slopes in a way that on, on the top of this image is the low point of that roof. And on the bottom portion of this roof is the high point. The areas that's to be added on as part of the new stairs is occurring at this point where we're seeing that the roof will be in alignment with the existing roof shed as well as the areas of the master bedroom addition. And I have also the elevations, the rear elevation is really the most descriptive of what's occurring. Here at the top is where the master bedroom addition is occurring. As well as just behind that, we have areas that are being enclosed under the balcony going off of one of the bedrooms. There are new windows and doors throughout. On the front elevation, you can see areas between the entrance and the garage. Highlighted here in white as areas of infill. From the north elevation, we get a better view of what that infill from the front will look like. And what the infill of the new stairs and then master bedroom will look like to the roof. So here on top is the rear of that roof. And the bottom roof line here is is more forward and more in line with the face of this wall. At the south elevation, we can see a variety of new improvements here. We have multiple new windows and doors. We have the volume here being proposed as the new stairs. This at the lower level or at the main level is all within existing wall. It's being added above to maintain access to the second level. And then here to the right. There is the area of addition and extension of the master bedroom. Let me get a better idea of how it currently works. How access is maintained from grid all the way to the basement. The door to the basement is right here. On the lower right hand portion of this image. And here are some photo renderings and photo montage of the proposed residence. Here on the left, we can see areas of infill where that breezeway was. And we can also see all the new windows and doors throughout. On this elevation, there's not much. It's really just this area of infill. Here on the right is just another view of that more from the center of the street. We have other renderings here of the rear inside of the proposed residence. We can see that from the deck off of one of the bedrooms more at the center portion of the building. The enclosure is occurring just below that. We can see new windows, new doors. That are, that's being infilled as part of that breezeway. Just to the right of that, we can see where the volume is being added above the existing area here for the stairs along with a window. And to the right of that, this is maintained, most of this portion of the wall is maintained except for this area of the addition to the extent as an extension to the master bedroom. Where we're also seeing mostly new windows and doors. And to the right. The image to the right of that is just another viewpoint of that. So the application requires that findings be made for design review permit. The first being that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan. In that it maintains residential low density as a single family residence. And it maintains preservation by refurbishing existing housing stock. To that it interferes, the interference with the use possession enjoyment of surrounding properties is not affected. And that there is no change to the use of the property nor the functions of spaces being altered. The height bulk scale mass. Number three, the height bulk scale mass inciting of the proposed project remains similar to the existing residents from public view. And is compatible with existing, with the existing neighborhood landforms and surroundings. And I just want to add to note that portions of the structure can be seen from other public rights of way. And it is worth noting that that the proposed project will, will be not substantially in dominating in terms of height, bulk or mass. Number four, that the proposed project reflects the scale of the neighborhood. It does not visually overpower nor dominate the neighborhood and it is not ill proportioned and maintains existing architectural style. The proposed project does not unreasonably interfere with public views or the views and privacy of neighbors. Nor does it produce unreasonable noise levels or cause material adverse impacts. To add on to this, where, where there is the existing upper balcony off of the master bedroom. That space is currently usable. So whatever privacy concerns there are, that's kind of already existing. So we're looking at this as not being a change to that privacy. Number six, the proposed additions are responsive to the existing architectural style by matching the existing materials. On all, on all elevations and maintaining existing shed roof design lending to a project that is coherent throughout all elevations. Number seven, the proposed project is seeking relief from development standards for additional height. An effort to maintain existing shed roof style intended to preserve the architectural style. An alternative option was explored in reducing the height of the roof. But the design resulted in watershed drainage issues. Additionally, an alternative to modify the roof style from shed to gable was not recommended as it would result in a detraction from the original architectural style. And finally eight for design review permit findings. A, that the proposed project is thoughtful in that it is an addition that is well adapted to the existing style of the structure. That could only be achieved through custom design rather than standard generic or cookie cutter plans. Historic preservation is not applicable as the residence was originally built in 1980. Proposed project does not impact the landscape as it is proposed to be located within the existing footprint of the structure. Open spaces maximized by citing of additions being entirely within footprint. Public view and neighbor views are anticipated to be altered, but not in such a way that results in a loss of privacy or results in dominance of structural features. High quality architectural styles and building materials compatible with the overall project design by maintaining and respecting the existing architectural style. And finally F, that sustainable building and landscape practices, especially water saving features are incorporated into the project by meeting building energy code requirements as part of their plan check in the future. For variance, the following findings have been made that the condition for the variance does not constitute a granting of special privileges. And that the scope of the project is limited to the addition that continues the existing roof line of the structure. And does not result in an increase of the height beyond a horizontal plane currently established by the roof. The variance does not authorize use or activity that is not otherwise expressly authorized. That because the project is remaining as a single family and its use and character. Special circumstances include the dramatic drop in grade and elevation rendering a site that is infeasible for construction of new footprint at grade level. Topography of the site constraints feasible alternatives to building conformance with the development standards. The function of the space is proposed to be altered and pose a level of danger to small children whereby a sheer drop from the top deck to the lower deck exists and is requested to be alleviated through the proposal. To enclose that space with solid walls and a roof. The variance is consistent with the general plan and that the property preserves maintains the existing residential housing pattern and preserves existing housing stock. For minor condition lease permits for the parking, the following findings have been made. That the proposed project neither is detrimental nor consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. The, the site is constrained by topography and existing building area resulting in limitations from development of covered parking to meet that requirement. The proposed project will not interfere with the use possession and enjoyment of surrounding and adjacent property owners. The request would necessitate the preservation of the natural land by eliminating need for additional grading and impervious services. The character of the surrounding area will not change by allowing for existing parking conditions to continue unchanged. And finally, that there is adequate onsite open space parking that would not result in an impacted on-street parking. Tonight, the commission has the following alternatives. They may approve the project pursuant to planning commission resolution 2102. They may approve the project with modifications. They may deny the project identifying the findings that the planning commission feels cannot be made and the basis for rejecting those findings. Or they may continue the project and provide staff and the applicant with the direction. That concludes my presentation. And unless there are any questions for staff, I do believe my applicant has a presentation.
I have one question for staff. When I visited, I noticed that the site was under construction. Have permits already been released for this project?
There were prior permits to demolish the, there was a chimney there that was under some structural disrepair. So it was permitted to demolish a chimney. Because it, because our building department had deemed it unsafe.
And were there permits for everything that you've put in for as infill?
No, that was to be permitted as part of this project.
So what, what, what we saw there when we visited was the infill sections that connected the garage to the house were not permitted?
There are sections above the breezeway that are permitted as part of the original construction, but everything at the main level. I believe is staff believes to be an existing condition as open breezeway.
Were, were there permits for those additions?
I'm sorry, which additions?
The ones that connect the house to the garage.
I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I believe that was part of the original construction.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions for staff from the commission? All right, would the applicant like to make a presentation or a statement?
Sounds good. Hello, everyone. I'm Josh Cable and this is Julia, my wife. Thank you so much for your time and consideration and I really appreciate all the work that's been done on our behalf, both by the commissioners and the staff. I would like to share a, my screen. So if I may share. And also just to answer the question, it is our understanding that the, from Commissioner Spears, that the the breezeway area, the area above was permitted. There's about two to three dozen permits for this property. It was an addition later on, and I'll talk a little bit about that. It was done, the house was built in 1980. This addition took place in the late 80s. So anyway, but I'll, I'll get into that. So a little bit about us, we lived in a small condo in Pasadena for about five years and once our second child. We were, once we found out we were expecting a second child, we decided that we needed something bigger. Our older child, the daughter attended Bridge Montessori at this year, Madre Methodist Church. And we really started to see how special Sierra Madre is. It's really a small community within LA County, something that I never thought was possible. So May of last year, we purchased 690 Oak Crest after a friend and resident of Sierra Madre said we had to check it out. And we continue to love the community and we can't wait to join by actually moving in to our home. So this is this is what we actually look like. This is what the last year has felt like for us. For those of you unfamiliar, this is a 1986 comedy starring Tom Hanks and Shelley Long. That a couple who buys a house and basically encounters every maintenance issue possible. Which is not too far from our situation. So we wanted to move in right away after doing some minor work. Over since purchasing the property, we've discovered the following issues. Water intrusions, which are both caused by pipes and rain intruding from the outside. An unstable fireplace, which we talked about and we removed. A massive rodent infestation that took place at one point. A lot of non-standard framing. It's surprising that this got through back in the day in the 80s and I have questions about the inspector looked at this. And then my personal favorite, a bath towel covering an air duct. And you don't need to be a construction professional to realize that's not a standard way to repair an air duct. So anyway, we decided to gut the interior. Basically, the more, the more we started to work on the property, the more we found there were issues. And we, we really basically at the end of the day, didn't trust the property anymore. We really wanted to get an idea of what was going on. So as Joshua mentioned, we got a permit to demo the, the fireplace, which was constructed poorly. The masonry was poor. Structural engineer told us to take it down. Once we opened that, we realized that we needed to take out a lot of the drywall to see what else was, you know, what's going on. The silver lining of all of this, however, is that it allowed us to take a step back and really think through what we wanted out of our home now that everything was torn apart. So we really could maximize the safety usability and aesthetics of the home. But before I get into that, I, I think it's important to share a little bit about the house itself and there's a unique history. So the house construction, as we understand, started in 1979, was completed in 1980 as a house with a detached carport. And then it was remodeled in the late 80s, we think by the folks that sold us the house. In a way that extended that basically the second floor over and created a room above the carport. That's basically a rec or, or living room. The house was modified multiple times and it appears that without a clear design vision in mind. Evidence of that, one of the rooms was actually built on top of the deck. So as I showed the commissioners that came in by and visited. You can actually look under the room. So that room needs to be rebuilt anyway. So we'd like to address this situation by having a clear design vision and a thoughtful layout, which we think will be implemented in this project. And of course, including the room built on the deck. So anyway, here are the goals with the project. We really want to improve the safety of our home. We have again, two young children. We want to create a more natural and logical flow within the house. We also want to create workspace. We're both Julie and I work from home a large amount of our time. We want to improve the aesthetics, both for ourselves and for the neighborhood. And we want to improve the sustainability of the home and reduce maintenance costs. So I think there are a few things to highlight with the project scope. First of all, that it will correct or reduce some non-conformities. Actually, since we connected with Joshua. We actually recalculated. There was an area of the decking that will actually be removed. So this project in our calculation will actually result in a net reduction of square footage for this home. So that's again, that's part of the deck. It's, it's symbolic. It's about eight to 10 feet. So we know it's not huge, but I think it's meaningful and you know, a sign that we really want to move towards compliance on this home. It will also meaningfully lower the structural footprint. As Joshua mentioned, we're building on the existing footprint. So that will, I think, you know, from a Oak Crest standpoint, if you're standing on Oak Crest, it will enable better views to the canyon behind it. Will also improve the energy efficiency of the home. It won't, will not increase the height of the structure as what we're proposing simply extends the existing roof lines. It will not impact the privacy of neighbors and I think actually it will improve. Or one of our next door neighbors joked that if we wanted to lean over the, the railing of the balcony and look into his yard, we could based on the existing structure. By enclosing it, it actually prevents us from doing that. And we have the support of both of our next door neighbors and they have written letters on our behalf. We also think that this situation was anticipated and explicitly allowed in the Sierra Madre municipal code. So if you look at the section 17 dot 56 dot 080 that states that work that that reduces, but that does not entirely eliminate a non-conformity shall be allowed in the following circumstances. And basically this also, at the very top, it says this, nothing in this chapter shall be deemed to prevent the construction enlargement, expansion, extension or reconstruction thereafter referred to as work of a non-conforming use or structure in the following manner. And so if you go down to section B, it says reduction of non-conformity work that reduces, but does not entirely eliminate a non-conforming a non-conformity shall be allowed in the following circumstances. Work which reduces the non-conformity of residential setbacks shall be allowed, provided there is modified setback, which is at least 10 feet from the front yard, five feet in the rear yard and three, three feet from the side yard, which of course you know, we meet. So coming back to Joshua's slide and a table that he showed earlier. Currently, there is a setback, non-conformity on the sides. This project will address that non-conformity. And so again, we believe the planning commission needs to recognize in the spirit of the prior ordinance, that this is something that should be allowed. So Joshua gave a really good overview of what we're looking to do. I'll just kind of recap it real quickly. We want to enclose the second floor balcony. And really, by the way, before I start into the specifics, this isn't intended to be a land grab by any means. What we're trying to do is improve the layout to be more thoughtful and again, improve the aesthetics and reduce maintenance maintenance costs for ourselves. So we want to address potential safety issues with the railing. We want to reduce our maintenance costs. We want and we want to create basically workspace. Same more or less goes for the enclosure of the breezeway. The stairwell, we want to move to the center of the house to make it a much more logical flow. We're converting the house or the basement to an ADU, which again can go towards supporting the housing constraints that we have in California. And then finally, as we talked about, the demolition of the gym and storage area addresses a number of issues as well. So a quick few words on the community impact. Again, this corrects the non-conformity by removal of part of the structure, improved views from Oak Crest Drive, proves the aesthetics of the structure on all sides via thoughtful architecture design. And we got a really good suggestion from some of the conversations we had recently that there's there are ways to make this house look perhaps a little bit less conspicuous. And so we're open to, you know, changing the color to make it look, you know, to blend in a bit more with the neighborhood. We've received letters of support from both our next door neighbors at 650 and 700 Oak Crest Drive. So we were really getting their buy-in to this was really important for us and we wouldn't have proceeded without it. And so just to recap, again, this project corrects and ameliorates various non-conformities by reducing the square footage of the property, definitely reduces the footprint or lot coverage. It addresses fundamental but specific issues with the property's layout, proves aesthetics, has support from the neighborhood. And we believe that most importantly, will improve the safety for occupants and guests. So with that, I will stop. We also have our architect Nathan Coffey on the line. So if there are questions, I may defer some of them to him.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for the applicant? It doesn't sound like it. So I guess that we can go to public comment before we bring it back to the commission for discussion. At this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning this specific agenda item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than five minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Public minutes here to dial in. At this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning this specific agenda item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than five minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. We have any callers who have called in for a public comment.
Dennis, we do have a couple callers. I'll patch the first caller through now.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, caller, you are live. You may begin with your comment.
Hi, my name is Claire Nettleton. I'm here with my husband, Justin Soski. We live at 185 East Allegra Avenue. So we just wanted to say that we think that this plan is very reasonable. I think that it's going to improve the house and the neighborhood. We also know Josh and Julia from Bridge, where our son went to Bridge Montessori with their daughter, and we just think that they're just wonderful people and we're just in full support of this plan. I'll pass it on to my husband if he has anything else to say.
Yeah, and we're also, you know, we very support Sierra Madre's initiative to, you know, keep up standards in our wonderful city. And I feel like Cable's plan really maintains that and it, you know, doesn't increase the imprint of the house, you know, it's a variance, but it's not a variance of a variance in terms of making it bigger or, you know, more off. Yeah, it's it seems totally okay with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller.
Please stand by while I'll patch them through. Give me one second.
Hello, this is Grace Brown. I am representing 464 Mariposa Avenue here in Sierra Madre. My husband and I, we both 100% support this move and the changes that the cables are doing to their home. They are actually the ones who introduced us to this wonderful city and convinced us to move to Sierra Madre after living in Pasadena. So we feel like all of these changes are completely acceptable. And yeah, we would like to just voice our support.
Great, thank you. We have any other callers who would like to comment?
Chair Dennison, at this time, there are no additional public comments.
All right, with that, we will bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Does anybody want to jump in? Commissioner Pe- Vice Chair Pedner?
Yeah, can I just ask a question? I was trying to have any trouble with my mute when the applicant was talking. I just wanted to get something clear that their minor CUP and their variance were really about more safety issues, water drainage and some other things about falling off balconies. Is that the reason for the design? I just wanted to clear that up because I have some comments about the design, but I don't want to if that was one of the reasons, it might change what I would say.
Yeah, can I respond? Okay, yeah. So, yeah, I think, you know, we have the the property has a very large deck and it has two upstairs balconies. And so in the event that this is not approved, we will create a large glass barrier for both of those balconies to prevent our kids from climbing on the existing railing and, you know, ideally you know, staying safe. So, yeah, I mean, the the main reason is is safety with a secondary reason around maintenance, having a superfluous second floor balcony creates some maintenance issues. There's already some drainage damage that you can see on that balcony. There's already another second floor balcony. So you know, there are a lot of reasons. And then, you know, in our opinion, it looks odd with with that balcony there as well. So I think, you know, the the structure today would be improved, I think, by a cleaner architectural you know, look by having that as a smooth wall rather than the balcony that looks there that that exists there today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
All right, do you want to start the conversation?
I'll go ahead and say what I was going to say, just because I think I was looking at the design originally have is having just not enough articulations. There's some oddity to it and asking for the height limit height variance and whatnot didn't make sense. Now that I hear their explanation and the design corrections. It, you know, it seems to make sense. I mean, there's sort of a massive unarticulated side that does create, which I don't agree with the analysis, that doesn't create a sense of mass. But since they're having to fix so many problems from what that they inherited. I guess I can understand them. So in that sense, I can I can support it. I would like to hear what everybody else has to say. I'm a little dismayed that whoever they had did their inspection didn't find all these things. It seemed they were all behind walls and hiding. I feel bad that they didn't find them, but you know, that's the way is California. Sometimes people make you accept things as they are. If you want it bad enough, you say yes, and you go along with it and then you discover things. So anyway, that's my only comment about the lack of articulation and some of the massiveness on the one side. But I understand why they're how they're trying to correct that. So maybe they're stuck and if not but for that, there might I might have other comments on approving it or not, but otherwise I think I can support it.
Commissioner Dallas, did I see you raise your hand?
Yes, I did. I have to tell you, I spent more time with this project than just any other one that I've seen since I've been on the planning commission. It's a massive house and it's got some oddities and so I had extra concern about the extra mass of the extra adding to the master bedroom on the backside at the ridge. And I talked to Josh about that at the site and he assured me that from down below, it really didn't seem to make much difference. And I'm going, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I actually went down like the Sierra Meadows and the prominence of the roof behind it at the master bedroom is just so strong that I don't see moving it out six feet, eight inches is going to really change that effect at all. And so that was some of the major issues I was working with. So and then I had some concerns as Bill suggested about the articulation. And I was thinking, well, maybe if you push the master bedroom out, you gable down. Instead, there's a precedent for the gable over the garage. That would reduce mass a little bit. And I went back, I was down on Sierra Madre, Sierra Meadows Drive. And I looked up and the two other two other really large houses on the bottom third of that list, just to the north, both have the same low gable. And if you did that on the proposed project, it would look like a tract along the ridge. And so you don't want to go that direction. And I finally just went, well, it's a nice, strong design if you just let them go up over the master bedroom addition. Took me a long time to get there. In fact, I talked to some architect friends and it was just like, yeah, that's really the sensible thing to do. Speaking as an architect professional and so it weighs my opinion as a commissioner. I do like a lot of the things they're doing, like enclosing the breezeway and lopping off the gym and the storage room that makes the building a lot cleaner. One of the things I suggested is for articulation, maybe over the staircase. Dropping that down like a gable roof, so it it has a south face to it. And that's a possibility, but I don't know even if that's going to give you enough articulation to make it worth the effort of doing it. Maybe you could solar panels there, but maybe not because of the sidewalls. And so that also sort of after hours of consideration faded away as an important issue. Parking I didn't see was a problem.
Oh, my God.
For now.
Thank you. Commissioner Spears.
This house is a head scratcher and I'm certainly glad that I'm not the engineer that has to sign off on it's what's going on because I think it's been modified so many times that we can probably agree of what what it looked like in 1980, but since then it is morphed into a number of things and they've tried to continue to enclose those additions. So that it's hard to see what the original architectural style might have been and you know, where it's going. So we're asked to do four. We're asked to 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 vote on four issues. The first of all, with parking, I have no problem with the parking. There's enough space around the house to park. I don't see that as being an issue. The one about the height. The house is not going to get any taller. The enclosure of that second story porch is just going to make it line up with everything else. The logic of, oh, it needs to happen because of the safety of the children. I'm not quite sure meets all the levels. I think there's plenty of other ways of making that in a safe enclosure without putting up walls. Having said that, I'm not sure that the walls make would make that house any more visible or more of an anathema. I mean, I drove around and looked at it from other streets as well and it's big and it sits out there and it's a bright color and you can see it from a lot of places. So whether it's got that how that corner enclosed or not, I don't know. And I think the same thing is then is true for the place where they want to put the stairs. That's it. It looks like it's a it's a section between two additions that they're just going to join up. In the end, it may give the house a cleaner line. I will leave that to my friends who are architects to rule on that. I would certainly like the ceiling line, the roof line not to be so so high, you know. There's a lot of, there's a lot of empty space in that vaulted ceiling. On the other hand, how to fix that and make it aesthetically pleasing? I'm not an architect, so I don't know. So the changes that are being proposed don't make the house any taller. It does make it a little visit more visible. I am highly I highly recommend that they consider another color because that 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 house sticks out. I mean, it catches your eye going up the other the other streets. So if they can tone down the color, if they can make it more compatible with the landscape, I think they'll be doing themselves a favor and balance out the issue with the enclosure of the two areas. Knocking off the gym, that's fine. I think it's, I think, I think in all honesty, the house needs to be reduced in some way, shape or form, but I can't see the original area of the house defined to do that. So I understand why they want to enclose that and as long as I'm not the engineer who signs off on it, I guess I'm okay with that. The additional dwelling unit in the bottom, we can't, we have no say on that, but I'm okay with that. It seems to work. I hope it it works out with their plans. So I can swallow hard and and proceed with this only because I don't see them having a any better options, but I'm not the, I'm not the design guy, so I don't know those. But I would highly recommend that they consider using colors to mitigate the presence of a house in the neighborhood. And I think that'll go a long way towards rectifying some of some of the heartburn we're feeling right now.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Spears. I echo a fair amount of those sentiments. Certainly the height isn't getting any, any higher. You inherited the height, not much to do there. I would strongly agree with the idea that claiming safety issues on a patio like that is not something that's a valid argument when it comes to this. You can easily change those railings. If they're not already code compliant to today's code, change them to that. You can put up any number of things that are clear and not seen. So I, I don't really buy that. It felt more like an emotional, an emotional ploy. But you know, the parking, the parking's tough up there. There's, there's very little, those driveways are so close together. There's not the perfect place to put a car out there. The, the driveways come close to each other. And so you're just going to see a ton of cars out there and you're infilling the spot where you could have put a car. That's the part that gave me the most heartburn, if you can believe it, of all the parts of this house that there are to, to be challenged with, infilling what could have been a perfectly good parking spot to hit code would have been a, a bigger win, in my opinion. That said, it doesn't sound like it's enough to hold up the project from anybody else. So I'm not going to, to force the issue on this one. There is plenty of driveway space. So I think I can also make the findings. So if we have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pedner, was there anything else you wanted to say?
No, I would like, well, no, it's irrelevant. That's fine, thank you.
All right. So unless there are any other comments from any of the commissioners, I think we're probably ready to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept design review permit twenty zero dash zero nine variants, twenty one zero one administrator design review twenty dash zero seven and minor CUP twenty dash zero six as represented maybe with the, with just the, the minor adjustment of, of earth tone colors as suggested by Commissioner Spears, as long as it's, and we could, I would recommend we, we approve it subject to if, if the client is the, as long as the applicant is agreeable.
Looks like they are nodding their head and sent to that request. So we have a second for the motion as presented.
I can second it.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please note an abstention from Commissioner Hutt for the record. Motion carries. Thank you applicants. Next up on our agenda, the planning commission reports. Do any commissioners have anything they would like to report? Does not appear as such. So let's move on to planning and community preservation staff reports.
Just a couple of items. We, our next meeting is on March ninth, or rather, March eighteenth. And we will be considering the AT&amp;T Wireless Cell Tower application. That was originally going to be scheduled for March ninth, which was today's meeting. But it was pushed off to March eighteenth. We also have a sign program that is being proposed by Christ Church. And we will be reviewing that item as well. And also, as mentioned by council member Parkerst, the city council meeting is proposed to be an outdoor meeting at four P M. And we do have two items, the reinforced masonry ordinance, the affordable housing ordinance. And also an additional item is mainly consent, which is the report to the housing and community development for, which is part of our annual housing report. So that's also on the agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I guess that brings us to the end. So I will adjourn the planning commission to our next regularly scheduled meeting at March eighteenth. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.